Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular council meeting for June the eighth. It's nice to see all of council on the screen tonight and that we get a little
Recording in progress.
Up with each other prior to the council meeting. That's wonderful. Also, we welcome all of those that are watching on live stream and those that have joined us this evening. And staff members as well. Welcome to our meeting. I wanted to let you know that the meeting is being audio, video and livestreamed on the Town of Innisville's YouTube channel and shall form part of the record, which will be retained in accordance with the town's retention bylaw. And for more information on that bylaw, you may contact the clerk's office. We'll start this evening with the land acknowledgement. And the Town of Innisville acknowledges that we are situated on treaty land that is steeped in rich indigenous history. We also acknowledge that this land is the traditional territories of the first peoples of Turtle Island. It is shared between the Nishnabi peoples of Bozale First Nation, Chipewas of Rama First Nation, and the Chipewas of Georgina Island First Nation. And we thank them for their generations of stewardship. This meeting place is still the home to many indigenous people. And as settlers, we are grateful to have the opportunity to work on this land. The town acknowledges the four sacrifices that are the foundation of Canadian society today. We are dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nation, Métis and Inuit peoples. So we have quorum and we can open our meeting. We have open forum as our first item. There are no items for open forum this evening. So we'll move on to item three, which is the approval of the agenda. And I would ask councillor or deputy mayor Davidson and councillor IC if they would move and second the approval of the agenda as printed. Are there any agenda repair required before we move forward? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? That's carried. Next, I'll ask if there's any disclosures, opportunary or conflict of interest on the items on the agenda this evening. Seeing none, if one becomes apparent to you through our discussions, please make it known at that time in the clerk's office, we'll send you the necessary paperwork to fill out for that. Next is presentations and petitions. So we have one presentation tonight, and that is our, the annual presentation from our pitching committee. And I believe councillor Fowler as chair, are you giving this presentation this evening?
Yes, your worship.
Wonderful. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, my fellow Innisvillians. Tonight, as a chair of the Innisville Pitching Committee, I am privileged to share with you the following update regarding our 2022 pitching event. Your pitching committee, vice chair Sue Bennett, Kim Creamer, Lynn, Lynn Chaperny, Anne Kell and Al Gilchrist, thank everyone that participated in the 2022 pitch in cleanup day. After two long years facing odds that were well against us, the committee was able to host a very successful pitch in day on Saturday, May fourteenth, with schools participating during the week of May ninth to thirteenth. Residents were able to register online again this year. And the committee extends their appreciation to Natalie Graham and communication staff for posting articles, social media posts and promotions through Quebec signs for this year's annual cleanup event. Appreciation is also extended to Dominic Bianchi for creating the information video that was shared on social media, all which created a positive topic for discussion in many homes. The committee received numerous nominations for the Debbie Mills Civic Pride Award that recognizes the dedication of individuals in our community who have taken it upon themselves to maintain and clean Innisville all year round. We are happy this year to present Adam Egler with this award, who has cleaned up his community of Lefroy and Churchill and filled approximately a hundred and ten bags along the twentieth side road, fourth, fifth and sixth line. We would like to ask Adam to turn on his video and say hello, if possible. Adam was presented with the certificates of appreciation. His name will be added to the Debbie Mills Civic Pride Award plaque. If there's just a side note, if I'm ever lifting anything heavy or cleaning, this is the young man to call. He is very quiet. He is very industrious, but he's he's very strong. You can tell just by looking at him, like a gentle giant. With the online registration form, volunteers signed up to participate and were able to pick up cleaning kits at the town hall from May second to the thirteenth, where they came to the local fire halls in Okona, Stroud, Lefroy and Big Bay Point on the morning of Saturday, May the fourteenth. The committee would also like to extend its appreciation to Craig Henry and the many volunteer firefighters that helped opening the fire halls and handing out the cleaning kits that day. This year, we're pleased to host the volunteer appreciation barbecue at Centennial Park, where everyone was able to participate in a free lunch, refreshments, local entertainment, nature walk and library activities. With the great, without the great support of our local sponsors and donations received, this event would not be as successful as it is today. The committee extends their appreciation to the wonderful and generous people of our community. Now, the committee would not, the committee would be remiss if we did not extend our gratitude and appreciation to our customer service team, who work hand in hand with operations services, taking, taking calls so that our industrious road crew collect the, but could collect the bags and debris that filled the forty yard garbage bin. Without the teamwork from all involved, none of this would have been possible. And as everyone's been waiting, now for the Golden Broom Award, which is presented to the member of council that had the most volunteer participation in their ward. We are excited to announce the winner of the 2022 Golden Broom Award to councillor Donna Orsady of Ward Three, with the overall community winner, Mayor Lynn Dolan. Congratulations to you both. The committee extends their appreciation to everyone that participated in the pitch in day and looks forward to hosting the annual event on Saturday, May twenty third, twenty twenty three. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Questions or comments? First, I'd ask if I could please, if any, any, I know many of the members of the pitching committee are on the Zoom link tonight. And if you feel comfortable doing so, please turn your camera on so we can congratulate the team. I see Mr. Gilchrist and Sue Bennett, thank you so much for being with us here tonight. Questions or comments for the team, members of council, councillor Waters?
I just want to say congratulations, but I also just want to confirm that councillor Orsady swept aside councillor Rob Nichols as the holder of the, of the Golden Broom. Couldn't help that one, Rob. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nickel.
Thank you, worship. You know, eventually we all have to step aside and let some other people take over and have some fun with it. I think it was a good four, maybe five years, and I do believe that my broom was completely full. So I would expect that I would be left in the council chambers for everybody to admire the hard work and dedication I put in over the last many years. Congratulations to councillor Orsady and I guess the bar is raised for next year, but congratulations. That's great. So happy for everybody.
Thank you, councillor Orsady.
Thank you. Well, this is a total surprise and you know, it's, it's, it's a great honor, but it really is told the residents in Ward Three and the schools and, and those that have been picking up long before the actual day. And so, you know, the broom is really to thank those residents and it would be nice to have all their names on it. But I did, I think I won it maybe the first year, so it's kind of nice to, to win it in my, you know, swan song of excellence. Thank you very much. And thank you to, I want to thank all the members of the pitching committee, including the clerk of Kim Creamer and the assistance staff, because I know how hard they work. And it takes a lot to organize this event and the barbecue. It was well attended. It was a great day and thank you to all of them.
Thank you, councillor Fowler.
I just want to add, your worship, that I mean, the crew I've worked with for the past four years, no matter what came their way, it was always smiles or what can we do? How do we adapt? How do we roll? How do we move forward? It's, it's there. I am lucky to have them on my team. And I am, I'm so proud of everybody. I could not be more grateful for this committee.
Absolutely. And, and many of them have served much longer than four years. So I'm sure it was great to have all that experience on the, on the team when you came on. So thank you so much for that. I would also like to say that while I'm, I'm so thrilled that we have this event every year, it does infuriate me that we have to have this event every year. And you know, we have to continue to do our, our, our best to educate the residents and visitors. And I'm hoping that, that someday we won't need a pitch in committee. And I just also wanted to thank, I know there was members of staff, Kim Creamer always and brings a team along. And, and also our new C A O, Oliver was out there with his wife picking up garbage this year too. So thank you all very much for the, for the work that you've put into this event. And with that, I will ask councillor Van Berkel and councillor Orsady to move and second the, that the annual pitching presentation be received with grateful thanks. Seeing no other comments, all those in favor. Those opposed? That is carried. Members of the pitching team, you're welcome to stay and watch the rest of the meeting if you like, or, or you can log off and watch it online stream or, or get on with your lives, whatever. We, you volunteered so much of your time already, we can't ask anymore, but thank you for being with us this evening. And that takes us to item number six, which is delegations of members of the public. And we have none of those that we received this evening. So next we'll go to item number seven, which is county council, municipal associations, conservation authorities, any updates from anyone on committees and that you sit on for the betterment of the community. Councillor Orsady.
I'm just always happy to share a couple of things. The end of the Innisville Beach Park ad hoc committee was completed. And it ended with the launch of the dog days this summer in a very soft launch, which you'll see residents will be able to see posts at Innisville Beach Park in beach number one with the timeframes for allowing the dogs into the water and into the park. So that is great. And then on behalf of Innisville Libraries, just wanted to recognize and remind residents, this is a great month to visit the libraries with the libraries, Lakeshore Library and, and the others have displays right at their doors with great books, celebrating Indigenous History Month and celebrating pride. And so you can read all about it at the Lakeshore Branch. There's a wonderful sculpture from Ted Fullerton. And there's also sculptures at the Cookstown Library and not to miss is the lab rent that is held in Cookstown. And please go on the library, Innisville Libraries website and check out all the events that are happening this month. You don't want to miss it.
Thank you, councillor. Any other updates from boards or commissions? Thank you. I, I have a couple. The first one, I want to introduce you to a young lady that I've been working with for about six months now, Javaria Handslod. So through my role at A M O, A M O decided to work on a youth engagement to get young, brilliant minds interested in local municipal government. And so this year, the, well, actually in 2019, we had our first youth fellowship program that was put on hiatus, hiatus for a little while throughout the pandemic. But this year, this fall, actually 2021, we went out for applications for a second cohort for the A M O Youth Fellowship Program. So after conducting group interviews, we shortlisted candidates and three fellows were selected from across Ontario based on their experience in local committees and their interest in municipal politics and governance. And I'm very happy to tell you that I was selected to mentor one of the candidates, which is Javaria Handslod. And I'll just tell you a little bit about her and then I'll tell you really, it's not about me mentoring her, it's about her mentoring me. Javaria is from the city of Mississauga and is currently pursuing her Master of Public Policy degree at the University of Toronto's Monk School of Global Affairs, after completing her Honours undergraduate degree at York University, majoring in political science and human rights. She specialized in community development and wrote an honours thesis on her unique community experience. Javaria is currently working with Urban Policy Lab, where she analyzes policy, policy issues facing municipal level governments and communities in the greater Toronto area. She has worked for the Ministry of Children, Community and Social Services, where she learned more about how provincial and municipal partnerships can better meet the needs of communities and how governments can work towards diversity and inclusion. So I've had the opportunity to be virtually connected with Javaria for several months. We, we worked together on a Global's Perspective High School class, a group of grade elevens who were loaded full of questions for us. And I'm looking forward to getting out of the virtual world and, and in the conference in August, we'll have some time to shadow each other. And I just wanted everybody to meet this wonderful lady. So Javaria, I know you are a busy lady, but you're welcome to stay on if you'd like and just observe the rest of our meeting and then you can tell us what we did right and what we did wrong. Thank you. The other announcement I had tonight, we haven't had a county council meeting since our last meeting, but we did nominate one of our county councillors who is Sylvia Bray. Sylvia is the deputy mayor of Wasaga Beach. We nominated her for the Ontario Caucus for the Board of F C M, and she was successful. So we're very happy to have her representing us. The Ontario Caucus has about sixteen members. Two of them are from Simcoe County, Kathy Jeffries from Collingwood and Sylvia Bray from the county of Simcoe. And I did not attend the conference. It was in Regina last week, but I did log on virtually to send my congratulations to past president, now Joanne Vanderhayden, the mayor of Strathroy Catarrach, who has just finished her term as a president. And the new president is the mayor of Vegreville, Alberta. So we look forward to working with our F C M counterparts through our work at the county. And that's all of my announcements for this evening. Seeing no other hands, we'll move to our consent list and we will go through. Oh, I need a mover and a seconder. I'm sorry for something. Deputy clerk, you, I need a mover and a seconder for, oh, okay, I'm sorry, for item seven point one. My apologies. Okay. Item seven point one is for those councillors who are attending the A M O Conference in Ottawa in August. Mover and a seconder, I'll ask councillor Waters and councillor Fowler. Any opposed? That is carried. Next, I will go to the consent list. My apologies. So we'll start with A one, special council meeting minutes from May the twenty fifth. A two, the council meeting minutes dated May the twenty fifth. A three, the special council meeting minutes dated May the thirtieth. Then we'll go on to various committee reports. So the B one, which is the Special Innisville Accessibility Advisory Committee Meeting. B two, the pitching committee meeting. And then we'll go to staff reports, the C one, which is the Administrative Monetary Penalties Policies. I'm just going to ask if we can pull that one. If somebody would pull it for me, I just have a couple of questions on that. So it pulled by councillor Fowler. C two, the user fees and charges update. Councillor ICs?
I'll defer that one, please.
And C three, the 2022 Asset Management Plan. Okay, nobody's going to pull this, but I just can't let this one go by. Typically, council is sees the tip of the iceberg. And this is a very small tip of a very giant iceberg that has been working on for, for many, many years. The, the regulations for this were passed in 2017. So the deadline for phase one is July first of this year. And I just want to compliment staff for all the work that went into this document. And I think it's a great job. I'm, it's something that's required by every municipality in Ontario. The carrot being that if you don't have an asset management plan, then you don't get infrastructure money from the province of Ontario. So it's a very important foundational tool for our municipality. And what I like about the way that we have approached it is in other municipalities, they've simply ticked it off the box. They're, they're doing it because they have to do it. But we're seeing it as a tool that we can use for, for our benefit and to make sure that, you know, we are financially sustainable into the future. And earlier on, when we had the in services presentation by CEO Prasad, he had that figure of 1.3 billion. Well, that figure came out of this work. We wouldn't have that figure if it wasn't for having this work completed. So a great big thank you to Mr. Melanision and his team for all of the work behind this. And I know there's a lot more to come, but this is, is a giant first step. So thank you. And then we'll go to C four, the Alcona Capital Water Balancing Offsetting. Comments or questions? Again, I just have a quick comment to make on this one that I think the focus in the future is going to have to be on educating people on L I, L I D and why it's important. Because putting L I D gardens into residential homes and then have people rip them out a year later is really quite frustrating. So I'm, I appreciate this. Councillor ICs and councillor Waters?
Thank you, your worship, for that comment. I, I did have a few little comments about this report. So maybe we can refer to the committee.
Wonderful. Thank you, councillor ICs. C five. That is the Part Lot Control Exemption Bylaw. And then we'll go to items in D, staff reports for information, D one, the return to chamber report. Just for those watching, we are, we know we were talking about going back into council chambers on, in June. We did have a, a mock meeting and tried to make sure that it was the proper experience for both those coming to watch us in person, but also those watching from home. And we did have some technical issues, so we're going to keep working on it and make it better. And we'll keep you up to date. D two is the Integrated Sustainability Master Plan Update. Councillor Waters?
I don't want to pull up, but I just want to make a comment that I had a long conversation with staff about the report, asked lots of questions. And was quite pleased to see the progress in the report and that, you know, they've, they've got two stages under their belts and moving forward. So that was really good. They've collected some good data to give them some good information that we can make, you know, some strategic decisions upon in terms of how we tackle climate change. So I just wanted to give the staff, you know, a call out in terms of seeing that they're, they're moving forward on this and they're taking it quite seriously and they've, they're, they've got some good data. And so I expect to see a, a, a further progress in the years to come and, and some good solutions for Innisville.
Thank you, councillor. Then next is D three, the non-standard procurement for street sweeping services. Again, just for those watching, I think we owe an explanation to people why we've had some difficulties in this, this year, that we, we've had some difficulty with our current contractor. We have found another contractor and we appreciate your patience. Normally, we would have all this work done by May twenty fourth weekend. And now our new deadline is July the eighth, but we appreciate your patience while we work through the issues with the contractor. And then we have E bylaws. There's no bylaws this evening and there is no correspondence for action. We do have three pieces of correspondence for information. We have the Police Services Board minutes for, for April twenty seventh. We have a proclamation for World Elder Abuse Day on June fifteenth and a proclamation for the longest day of smile, June the nineteenth. Seeing no one pulling any of those items. We will then move to approve our consent list and pulling C one, C two and C four. And could I ask councillor Payne and councillor Nickel to move in second that recommendation? All those in favor? That is carried. Next, we'll have a resolution to move into committee of the whole. And I will ask councillor, Deputy Mayor Davidson and councillor ICs to move in second that recommendation. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. And we'll move to item C one. And I'd ask, it was councillor Fowler who pulled that one. Do you have a seconder, councillor Fowler?
I'll take W and the Deputy Mayor, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to speak to it before I asked my question?
The only comment I had with it was, I was very pleased to see the undue hardship policy. With, with the times being as tight as they are, this is a good plan that we have and that we're putting in action. It, it eases up a lot of burden and speeds up the process. It benefits the town and it gives the opportunity, should something genuinely occur that, that is, that puts a person into, into a position of hardship, that we can work with them. It's not black or white. We're not just going with billy clubs and taking what we need. We're actually working with the community. So I'm actually, I'm actually very impressed with what they presented here tonight.
Thank you, councillor. I just wanted to point out one of them that, that I could see councillors kind of inadvertently getting into trouble with, and that was the political interference policy. So quite often, if not usually every Monday, I get a email from either a resident or a visitor who gets a parking ticket somewhere in the town of Innisville. Last weekend, it was from a, a couple from Chatham Kent, who didn't think that they had to pay for parking in the park on a weekend and wanted me to intervene. And so I always have sent, sent them the link to the review, to ask for review that they can fill out. But, you know, I could see somebody inadvertently thinking they were help, you know, reaching out to help a resident and, and, you know, getting involved in the process. And just wanted to point out that with this policy, it's really important that there isn't any political interference and that the resident themselves move forward with whatever it is. You can help direct them to the right people, but certainly not to take the cause on for them. So that was just my, my point on that. Councillor Orsady?
Thank you, worship. I, I agree with that. It was one thing that I made a note on that I think that, because it's not until later that it, it includes municipal councillors. And I think that this is something that would be important for the new term of office, for the next term of office for council, because having new council members that will come on for clerks to be able to explain the impact of, as you say, just the eagerness to want to help and jumping in. But this is a new policy and it's, it's really gonna, you know, take that sort of strict adherence to not jumping in.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions or comments? So all in favor of the recommendation? Thank you very much. I'm so glad to see us moving forward with this. And the next item was C two, the user fees and charges update. And that was councillor ICs. And do you have a seconder councillor ICs?
I do not as of yet. I will take councillor Orsady. Thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, so I, I looked at the, the report of all the different user fees and charges. And I guess this came from a
And I guess this came from a complaint from one of my residents in Ward 1, a fellow farmer. And I'm sure we get these at other times too. How come such and such costs so much? And the particular charge that, that farmers run into sometimes is entrance permits. So if I look on the report, it says the cost for an entrance permit is going up to over $300 now. And I know in our, another municipality where we have farms in Ormondone, it's owing the 120 bucks. So how are these fees determined? And is there any ways that we can, I know it's a big job to set them, but I think some of them are just set historically. And I just wondered if there was ways to, to comment on some of them.
Thank you. I see Ms. Webb.
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Ices. So I can certainly start it off. And if somebody from Operation wants to jump in, they can. In terms of coming up with our fees, our fees, you know, we do limit them to cost recovery. So we do take a look at the costs, the cost input, both direct and indirect in providing services. But that not isn't, you know, that's not the only factor. Of course, we do look at surrounding municipalities, you know, market conditions and things like that to come up with our rates and, you know, to determine that they are reasonable. So, you know, from the finance perspective, you know, that's what I'm aware of. In terms of the review that was done this year, I assume they went through a similar exercise. I don't know if Operation says anything to add in terms of the process of the undertook this year in reviewing that fee.
Is Director Bowman on the call?
Hello, through you, your worship, to Counselor Ices. Welcome. Hello. How's everybody doing? So through this process, we have looked at numerous other municipalities around us. Also, we need to take into consideration the amount of times that we actually have to go to certain areas. There's the odd ones where it's just, you know, it's set out perfect for us and then we can go. And then there's ones where we gotta go numerous times. There's times talking to the person putting in the entranceway. Like I say, it's, it's not usually that straightforward. It should be, but usually it isn't.
Thank you. I just want to recognize Mr. Seed. And I know you just got a promotion, but I can't, I can't come up with the title off the top of my head.
Thank you.
What is your new title?
It's the Operations Manager of Fleeton Roads.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Ices, did that answer your question?
Excuse me. Yes, it was, it was just a question that I felt I wanted to ask for, for the residents. Because, you know, they can ask me and I can, I, it's better to come from staff. And, and some of it is, you know, we all, we recognize that there are costs. But, but we don't probably recognize all of them. So that, that's, that's helpful.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. In this one Schedule B, Financial Services, I just need a assistance here. I read it. As a result of this review, staff are recommending the addition of one new fee called Payment Redistribution Fee. The Payment Redistribution Fee is applied after the second occurrence of a payment being made to the wrong account, which then requires a manual adjustment to correct. If this mistake is done by staff, because if somebody's gone through the system, entered the information, made the first payment correct, and the system all of a sudden takes the second payment and sends it somewhere else, and it has to be sent back to the right account. Can I get clarification as why we would charge somebody for this?
Sure. Ms. Webb?
Through your worship to Deputy Mayor Davidson. So this particular fee is a result of the customers entering in the wrong account or directing us to apply it to the wrong account. So we can get information through, so when you, you know, you're doing online banking, if you direct that payment to the wrong account, then we simply, you know, when we get that information, we do process it based on the information received firsthand. But then subsequently to that, if we discover either through the customer or ourselves that the payment was misapplied or applied to the wrong account, then we have that correction to make. And so, you know, we, we understand, you know, that mistakes happen sometimes. And so, you know, the first time that happens, you know, you know, we'll make that correction. But, so this fee is really to, you know, I guess deter or, you know, ensure people are paying attention to when they're making those payments and that they're, you know, not repeatedly making these mistakes. Because, you know, it does require manual intervention on our part to correct where the payment should sit.
Okay, follow up. What kind of fee amount are we looking at?
Annual fees.
Yeah, for this one in particular, if there was a mistake, a person does it first, like they make a mistake on the second payment, it's just an accident. Do we have like, like your insurance or forgiveness amount? Or you do it two times, then you pay. But what would the fee be for correcting a redistribution fee? What is that fee?
So it's, it's $12.50 for, for 2023 in terms of what annual revenues that would be. You know, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I don't think it would be significant. It's not, it's not, it's not a large amount. But, so it's really just there to, you know, to, I guess, compensate, you know, the municipality for, you know, customers that aren't being diligent and ensuring that their payments are applied properly.
I just worry that if it's somebody, you know, that's elderly or whatever, and it's just their eyesight may be going or something. We keep nailing them with a fee every time they do something. Maybe somebody could reach out to them or some, see if there's a disability there, some way of assisting rather than, to me, it's just like the banks, we're just taking every time we can. So it's supposed to be an ongoing thing. That's it. I'll leave it at that. Okay? Thank you.
I'll just add one more piece. In terms of, you know, when we do get these misapplied payments, you know, many times we are connecting with the customer to, you know, redirect them or notify them. Or, I mean, that's how we're discovering it. So we're discovering it, we're confirming with the customer, you know, providing them advice in terms of how to crack that going forward. So it's not just us, you know, correcting it and not advising them.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I saw Counselor Van Berkel, Counselor Asadi, and Counselor Waters.
Thank you, worship. I think it's page eight. I got it marked down here. Section 4.12C is testing alarm without notification to fire department or fire dispatch. I understand that. Well, what does second and subsequent stand for in brackets? Like it's a big fee, $509.
Chief Thomas?
That's through you, Mayor Dolan, to Counselor. If they haven't called to let us know they're testing their alarm, the first time is that's the initial fee and then the fees afterwards is for subsequent. So if they do that a second or a third or whatever time, we bill them again. But the, it goes to the MTO rates so that there's a bit more of an onus on them to do the right thing and contact the monitoring company and make sure that we're aware that they're testing the system. So we don't have false alarms and fire crews responding through the city unnecessarily.
And is the MTO rate, I'm sorry, worship. Is the MTO rate different than the rate that's listed here? $509?
Through you, your worship, to the counselor. That is the MTO rate, 509.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Asadi?
Thank you, worship. And thank you to Ms. Webb for answering all the questions that I peppered her with and all the emails about this item. There was one that I missed though, and whether Mr. Seed or Ms. Webb is able to help me on page 10 of this report under Public Skating, a new item, which is Parent and Taut or Adult and, and Taut. Something new, which is not an existing fee, but is proposed for 2023 is free for residents. So no cost, but it's also free for non-residents. Is there a reason? I mean, it's nice to offer this to parent and tauts, but is this typical that other communities offer this free as well?
Ms. Baughn?
Thank you, your worship, through you to Donna Asadi. Yes, it is typical for a parent and taut. We have been offering it free. It just was blank in the past rates. So it is something that has been happening for years. And most municipalities, when it's just a taut and an adult, there is no charge.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Counselor Waters?
Thank you, worship. Schedule D 4.4, 4.5, Inspection for Short-Term Accommodation Licensing. If I, did I miss something or did we pass short-term rental policy when I was sleeping or something? So I'm just asking, could somebody clarify that one for me?
Chief Thomas?
Sure, through you, Mayor Dolan, to the counselor. Anticipating that something will be happening meant that we just established the fee structure because we did not have one for it. So the STA would have to pass and be accepted and adopted by council before that fee was actually ever applied. But now we have the mechanism to recover the cost if it does get to that point. And this was the time to do that when we were doing the fees updates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions on the fees and charges by law? Chief Thomas, I had one for you. When you talk about MTO rates, so if I'm not mistaken, MTO pays us when we respond to something on Highway 400. And I know for a long time, those rates were stagnant and, and then actually even went down instead of up. Because I remember lobbying years ago when Minister Winn, Kathleen Winn, was the Minister of Transportation lobbying for those to increase. And I just wondered where you are now and what your thought is about whether or not they're fair.
To you, Mayor Dolan. Yes, I believe they are fair. Excuse me. There was an increase just in the last year to reflect close to, well, to the 509 amount. It was, I believe, 475 or 485 previous. And so when I look at, and if you notice, if I could take one second, a lot of our costs here for calls has gone to the MTO rate. This is saving our staff time because we would have to track who is on each call and their rate of pay. And that consumed a lot of time. And then, you know, you could, I could respond to your house with a crew today and you would be charged one amount, a different crew tomorrow and be charged a different amount. So this standardized reduced staff time and is a common practice among fire services. So we have just adopted that one. And that's comparable to what we were recovering cost-wise when we were billing per person, per hour, based on their rate of pay. So I am happy with that rate.
Thank you, chief. Any other comments? Wonderful. So we have a mover and a second or all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. And the next item was item C4. And that was pulled by Counselor Ices.
Thank you, worship. I would need a second or to get this on the floor. Counselor Fowler, thank you. So as I, I was reading through the report and it doesn't say in the recommendation, but for the residents, it basically said if, for those people with, in this development, there's rain gardens to assist in getting the water into the ground and not running off on, on hard surfaces and causing, you know, issues downstream. And I guess that struck me this spring because as a farmer, I have driveways and whatnot and we get snow and runoff. And, and there's parts in the field that they start to erode and that's, that's definitely a concern. So as a farmer, we have different options to deal with that, whether it's, you know, using cover crops or grass waterways or putting up structures to try and divert the water in gentler ways. So the, this motion asks for, I believe, a cash offset to, to be paid for those residents that don't want to have a rain garden for, I'm sure legitimate reasons, some of them. So I just had to ask staff, you know, is rain garden the only option for, for addressing this? And they had some, some good comments on that side. I wanted maybe to give them a chance to share what other things going on in the town and developments with regard to, to water management of this type.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed.
Thank you, your worship, through you to Counselor Ices. As you mentioned, you reached out to me. And I wanted to state that the, the rain garden is an older draft line condition. These draft line conditions were imposed more than five years ago. And we're no longer stipulating rain gardens in newer developments. And like I mentioned in my email yesterday, some of what we've already approved, but it's not in the ground as yet because we haven't reached the lot grading stage. But some examples are enhanced grass wheels, soak away pits, infiltration trenches and sand swills. So these have been approved for use in the town and we will see those shortly. I would say some will be constructed as early as next year and moving forward. And I just wanted to add to that, up to today, staff attended LID training. So we're, we're attending through the LSRC and the STEP program. We're attending training sessions on LIDs, how they're implemented, how they're maintained. And on top of that, we are exploring changes to the right of way to accommodate the LIDs. Because one of the things you'll see, this is not the first time we've had residents not wanting the rain garden. So our preference would be to have the rain garden in a space where it's controlled and maintained by the town. But that means we need resources, we need the staff and the time, right? The budget and the know-how to maintain these facilities. So, and if we're going to have them in our right of ways, it would mean some design changes to accommodate them in addition to all the utilities that are also in the ground and within the boulevards. So I'm hoping that with the town's move and focus on sustainability, we'll see a comprehensive approach to this. So we are actively looking at ways to improve the water balance through the town.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. Counselor Van Berkel?
Thank you, your worship. Personally, I'm very happy to see this recommendation because, of course, it's in my ward and Sleeping Line where all these rain gardens are. And I've probably had more calls over the last two or three years, people that didn't want them. One of the biggest troubles is they run through across two houses. One house is very diligent and makes them look beautiful. And the other side, they don't even pull a wheat. So, you know, it's a very difficult thing. And there's more, more of them are neglected than, than, than actually looked after. So if there's another way of doing it, you know, without, without being visible like, like a rain garden, I mean, I'm all for that. I understand what this is for and it's a good thing. But it's just not something that residents want. And after all, they bought the property and we're telling them what they have to do. Which is, you know, again, they figure they own the property, they, they can do it and what they want. So I'm very happy to see this policy.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Waters?
Yes, thank you very much, your worship. Not that I agree with that they're, they're, they're not required. They are. Uh, I have, not that I agree with that they're, they're, they're not required, they are required. Uh, but again, it's, it comes down to education and uh, you know, there's just some people who enjoy them, some people who don't. And like Counselor Van Berkel said, uh, you know, uh, that some people just didn't want to take the time to to manage them. However, we do, we do have bylaws which uh, mandate that people have to operate their properties in certain manners. So it wouldn't be the first time we've told people what they can do on their property. Uh, aside from that, I just wanted to ask the question uh, was, is that once we uh, allow these, subject, I think there's three uh, developments which are going to be allowed to uh, get rid of or not install uh, rain gardens, that these three developments will not have any uh, infiltration uh, strategies at all? And that, uh, how do we, uh, how how does that get offset uh, through the offsets?
Ms. Mohammed?
Through your worship to Counselor Waters. Um, so the attached to the staff report is the water balance offsetting policy. And there is an appendix that explains how that money is implemented by the LSRA. There is a committee that um, would grant funds to the town of Innisville to do retrofits to stormwater management ponds and to um, have those centralized facilities that I mentioned earlier, where town staff can access and maintain them. Um, I would say within one of the developments or at least two of the developments that you mentioned out of the three that um, or I should say all three, there, they they do have site plans. And I think we do have the opportunity within those site plans for there to be some sort of um, alternative LID measures in there. I don't know if Scott wants to add anything else.
Mr. McKenzie?
Um, yes, thank you, your worship, uh, through through you to the counselors here. Um, and also just to add to that, the 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 LSRA uh, committee and that meets and, you know, determines where the the money goes, those projects get put into the same watershed. So um, it, the money that is being um, collected for these rain gardens would go back into this watershed. We couldn't take these and and put them, well, I'll say down in Cedar Creek um, further south. That that money will go into this watershed. So locally, the water balance will get maintained in this area. Um, and and then we have a park site uh, in this subdivision under Alcona Capital that has some LID design in it as well. So um, we're, we're, we're squeezing it in at every opportunity we can and where we can, where we can control it and and not be um, caught without an enforcing mechanism.
Thank you. Counselor Waters, follow up?
Just a, just a, a quick follow-up, just a comment, is that um, in the sustainability plan, uh, they noted that uh, in future years, I think after twenty thirty, that uh, recharge rates are going to be in in a deficit. So these strategies are absolutely necessary to recharge groundwater. And so it's uh, it's something that's an absolute must that needs to happen in subdivisions. And it's important to come up with strategies that I think, you know, that uh, that the town can maintain or that are uh, maintenance-free, uh, that don't rely on homeowners because it's obvious that uh, is that something that seems to be a burden to homeowners, uh, that they can't maintain them.
Thank you, Counselor Waters. Yeah, I've been saying for years that it, I really think it's about changing people's um, opinions. And, you know, builders will build whatever people want. If people want round houses, builders would build round houses. Um, and it's that whole granite versus green. And um, right now it seems that granite trumps green. And we need to have people want the green uh, so that that's what the builders will build. And I did see some um, great LID work, I believe, in the design or the preliminary design for the twenty-five side road. So that would um, that would be wonderful because that would all be maintained by by us. Other questions or comments? Thank you very much for being here, Ms. Mohammed and Mr. McKenzie. Thanks for your expertise. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. That completes all of our uh, and items that were pulled. So now, consideration to adopt the recommendations from the Committee of the Whole. Counselor Van Berkel, would you move? And Counselor Arsady, would you second? All those in favor? That is carried. Next, we have the um, I think I missed the rise. Okay, now we're going to adopt the recommendations of the Committee of the Whole. And I would ask that to be Counselor Waters and Counselor Fowler. All those in favor? That is carried. Then we had a notice of motion uh, from the last meeting. So this is a motion for which notice has been previously given regarding antisemitism. And uh, could I have a mover and a seconder? Thank you, Counselor Payne and Counselor Van Berkel. All those in favor? That is carried. Announcements, please. Anyone have announcements? Counselor Nichol?
Your worship, just a couple of things uh, over the last week and then going to next week. Um, on May thirty-first, I was more than happy to attend the Cookstown Neighborhood Nights uh, kickoff for this season and really surprised how many staff, I should remember Wyatt from all of his summer camps over the years. So obviously with the two-year hiatus, it was great to have him uh, playing with some of his old camp counselors. So um, on June third and fourth, uh, along with yourself, able to go through Cookstown Chambers Wingding. Um, unbelievable turnout for those two full days. Um, clearly, people have been looking to get out and and do some stuff. Uh, definitely looking forward to Monday for the Year Mayor's Tournament. Um, and afterwards, uh, some birthday cake for Wyatt as well too. So it's going to be a busy day for for that, for me. Um, just reminder that uh, on Thursday, June sixteenth, it's the Hundred Men That Give A Damn for Innisville at the Wolfroy Legion, kicks off at seven, it's done by eight. Um, a hundred dollar donation to one of three charities, or sorry, split between three charities, a very worthwhile cause. And the group is continuing to grow, so it'd be great to hit the the actual Hundred Men as opposed to a few that were behind right now. Uh, I did see that the Gofford Community Hall has changed their bottle drive from this Sunday uh, the June twelfth to July ninth, the Saturday. So um, I don't know about anybody else, but I've been collecting some uh, some and hoarding some for for maybe two years now. So I'm looking forward to clearing out the back of my snowmobile trailer and to take those over there. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Van Berkel?
I think actually, Counselor Nichols uh, got most of it. I just, I was very happy. This past week it seemed like normal again. Out at the farmer's market and uh, at Wingding, it was meeting all the people, talking to people in person and not seeing all these masks. So this uh, was actually a very, very, very good week, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other announcements? Counselor Waters?
Uh, not so much an announcement, but a a comment to staff, but also to let uh, the town know that I uh, that every time we have lots of rain, which we did have in the past few days, uh, especially if it's at nighttime, I usually don't sleep because uh, Park Road is usually been flooded. And there's a couple of residents there who who are very anxious the entire night because their house gets surrounded by water. And so uh, during this rain, I actually went out to take a look at Park Road. And uh, it was in great condition because of the Park Road diversion. And so I walked the entire diversion in the park. Uh, it looks great, it's functioning, which is nice. So I just want to congratulate staff on a project that seems to uh, work and it looks good. So uh, just a a word of of positivity on on some of the work that we're doing.
That's great news, Counselor Waters. Great news. Thank you. Other announcements? Uh, I just, I had a couple. I just wanted to thank um, council for coming out to the town pride flag raising. And also, there was two. There was another one, South Central Police had one as well. So there was two pride flag raisings. Um, I want to um, remind everybody about the Onion Fest, the first Onion Fest that's coming up, uh, the seventeenth, I believe, through the nineteenth. And um, also uh, in regards to the provincial election, I just wanted to let council know I I sent a letter of congratulations to our uh, re-elected MPP Andrea Kanjin and also to uh, Premier Ford. And um, actually, congratulations to everybody who's brave enough to put their name on a ballot and do all the hard work that goes along with it. So um, and then my last item tonight was uh, condolences to the Ayers family. One of our longest-standing firefighters, uh, Wayne Ayers lost his wife Peggy. And I did attend the visitation um, along with a whole bunch of firefighters on uh, on Friday. And our deepest condolences to Mr. Ayers. And that's all the comments I had for this evening. So if if there's no more announcements, well, we can move to the confirming bylaw. And that would be moved by Counselor Payne and seconded by Counselor Nichol. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. And finally, adjournment. And that would be moved by Deputy Mayor Davidson and seconded by Counselor Ices that we adjourn at eight oh one P M. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to staff. I I I know that when you work for years on something and we pass it in five minutes, it must seem a bit anticlimactic, but please understand that we know all the work that has gone into all these reports that end up on our desk. So thanks, everyone, and have a wonderful evening.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Good night, and thank you.